I apply to Legion of the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Chair.
Yep, go ahead.
Before we begin our program, our meeting this morning, I was asked by Commissioner Gibbon to remember him and his family as they are wrestling with a family tragedy. And he will not be in attending today, he will be attending a funeral. So please remember him and his family in this critical time and sad time for him.
Thank you for that Commissioner. I mean, I'd like a motion to approve the agenda, but I would like to take item eight off of the agenda. As has been requested by the State's Attorney's Office.
So moved Madam Chair for your request.
Second.
Moving I, number eight.
Thank you Sean, we call the roll.
The second was Aaron's?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. I'll move on to our consent agenda, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Thank you Sean, we call it.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Then we'll move on to regular business. I received a letter from the Presiding Judge of the Second Circuit, Robin Howman. It's dated October 23rd, it's in your share file. Just discussing the courtroom needs and that we're not going to have Minnehaha County as a courthouse to use coming up here on the end of the year. And so we need to make some changes here in our current facility. Judge Howman, would you like to come up? Good morning.
Thank you, good morning. Robin Howman, Presiding Judge for the Second Judicial Circuit. I do have a PowerPoint. Thank you for identifying my letter Chairman Landine. With the discontinuation of our ability to use court space in the Minnehaha County courthouse, we are coming up, starting on January 2nd, with a critical need for additional space in this facility to hold our hearings. And I just wanted to take an opportunity to identify for you why that is. Oh, let's see, I'm not very good at this, I should just stick to the courtroom. As opposed to presentations. Thank you, okay, there we go. Starting in January 2nd, we're going to be moving a number of court proceedings down here to the Lincoln County facility. And I just wanted to help identify for you all of the judges who will be needing space in this facility. We have Judge Damgard, Judge Pecus, and Judge Sabers who are here, who will be here on a regular weekly basis. Judge Damgard will be holding about 600 hearings in this facility each year based upon our analysis of the last four months. We did a hand count of how many Lincoln County cases she handles, mostly in the Minnehaha County courthouse that will now be moved to Lincoln County. Judge Pecus handles all of the Lincoln County civil cases. He's been doing that in Minnehaha County, that'll be relocated now here to Lincoln County. And that's approximately 630 cases per year. And then Judge Sabers, who does the abuse and neglect caseload here for Lincoln County, that's going to translate into about 135 proceedings over the course of the next year. And when I say proceedings, that includes a 15-minute hearing, that includes multi-day court trials, it also includes multi-day jury trials. So when you see that number of 630, there's no way to quantify exactly how many days that will take, but it's a substantial number of hearings, 15-minute hearings, one-hour hearings, three-hour hearings, and like I said, multi-day court trials and jury trials that will now be relocated to this space. We also have our magistrate judges who hear cases here every Thursday. And we totaled those, you can see here for each of them, they come every Thursday and they alternate who comes. And that results in about 4,500 hearings each year that are already located here and will need to continue to be located here as far as our magistrate calendar. Then we have Judge Rasmussen, who's here all day, every day. And she has approximately 14 hearings that she hears in this courthouse every day for about 3,400 proceedings a year. And again, that ranges from 15-minute hearings to multi-day jury trials. We also have almost every other judge in the Second Circuit who does hear cases in Lincoln County. And those cases will also have to be heard here in this facility. Judge Hoffman is the one who has the most cases after Judge Pecus and Judge Rasmussen. But if you hearken back a couple of pages to the number of cases that Judge Pecus has, that's about 630 cases that he hears here each year. And Judge Hoffman has almost that same number. So those hearings will also need to be relocated to this space. And then you can see our trend line where we're anticipating and averaging about an 8.5% increase in hearings and cases each year. And we expect that to continue to grow. So what we believe is probably the most reasonable option for court space is this facility here. We recognize that it's used by the Commission on Tuesdays. Our proposal would be to utilize this as a court space the remaining days of the week. There are a number of things that need to occur to make the court space feasible or make this room feasible. One is that we would need to install a new recording system in this room. There is already one here, but we did a lot of thinking, strategizing, and discussing with those who are in charge of the recording system that's already here. And because of the nature of some confidential proceedings that the Commission has, as well as the confidential nature of court proceedings, we believe we need to install an entirely new system to make it work for this space. We'd also need to have council tables, probably four separate council tables in this space. We also need to identify workspace for the judge, the clerk, and the court reporter in this space. We also have a number of people who appear remotely for different proceedings, so we'll have to have some audiovisual equipment as well as computers for all of those people who would be working in this space as a courtroom throughout the course of the week. And we'd also need additional office space outside of this room, particularly for the judge who will now be likely officing here for the majority of the week. So we've tried as much as we can to utilize all of the spaces that are here, but because of the case volume and now the inability to use Minnehaha County space, we needed to identify an additional space here in Lincoln County to relocate all of those proceedings. Any questions?
Any of the members have questions?
Judge Howman, on your handout, with your circuit judges and your magistrate judges, were the majority of those cases handled in Minnehaha County?
The majority of the cases handled by Judge Pecus and Judge Hoffman are currently located in Minnehaha County. And you can see they have about an equal caseload that will now have to be relocated to this facility.
Other questions? I know I spoke with Jake Oakland, our IT person, I think he's already working to make sure that things are getting done in here. Do you know of anything right now that still needs to be done or?
We've sent a team of court staff as well as UJS IT staff down here about two weeks ago to do some of that walkthrough. And that's where we identified particularly that the UJS would have to install its own CourtSmart system in this room. And I believe there's ongoing discussions about the need for tables and chairs and other workstations, as well as computers. And I think those discussions are still ongoing. I'm assuming the judge is going to sit where you are. We need to install UJS computers, we'd need a computer for our clerk. So we're just trying to figure out the logistics of how to make that work when this is a dual utilized space. You know, we want to make sure that we don't have to reset up the room a couple of times a week to act as a court space, but also recognize that you're utilizing this for Commission space. And we want to make sure that it works well for everybody.
Were there, were there locations within the courthouse that were kind of ID'd for places that would work for offices? Are we going to need two more offices?
We will likely need one office starting in January. Those discussions are still ongoing. Judge Pecus is the one who would likely be officing here three to four days a week. And he believes that the current office spaces that exist that are not utilized by judges would be sufficient for his purposes. But if we do get a new magistrate judge in this next legislative session, like we're hoping, we might have to identify additional workspace.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions based on that?
I have a, probably not a question made on that. But Judge Howman, how, explain, are we falling behind from the standpoint that usually after a hearing is set and we follow good procedure? Are we behind keeping prisoners probably incarcerated longer than they need to be because they can't get their hearings or they can't get things done?
We might, if the caseload continues to increase as it is, we may eventually hit that point sometime next year or the year following where we have to start canceling hearings simply because there's no space to hold them here.
Thank you.
I'm experiencing that myself. I just scheduled a one-hour hearing and it's at the end of April, so my clients are feeling the rub with the space limitations that we have. Anybody else have anything they'd like to say, questions for the judge? If not, I'm going to open it up for anybody who wants to come up and give any public input onto this agenda item.
I don't know how to exit out of this, so.
That's okay.
Just step away.
We'll figure it out. All right, and if there are none, then we'll close that agenda item and I'm not sure how to do that either, but to get off the, get it back to the agenda. Okay. Now we're going to move on to our discussion regarding the Justice Center and prisoner care. We've got some folks here in the audience, I watched the meeting last week. And of the many options that have been presented, yet another option was brought forward last week, which was a lower-cost option on a greenfield slate to give us some long-term opportunity for growth and looking toward the future. And so I see Dick Strasberg's here and he's given us a couple of handouts this morning. Dick, do you want to come up and talk about what you're presenting this morning?
Good morning, Dick Strasberg with Tegra.
Good morning.
Do we need this on the overhead? I do have a thumb drive if needed.
If we can do it.
Sure.
Yeah, the doc cam might be too, well, it might work fine.
There you go, do my scribbles on there, but get the ID on it. All right. So last week, or two weeks ago, we looked at the plan that was option three. Just review that. That plan, basically it's a 12 courtroom building with four courtrooms built out initially, with expansion room to be able to build out 12. In the interim, the space that would be future courts would be used by the State's Attorney. So that's the overall concept on that. I think there's probably a debate if there needs to be four courtrooms now or if there needs to be six. But in any event, it's if we were to build out four of the courtrooms, build out the State's Attorney and all the space for, you know, jury assembly, clerk of courts, and a portion of the Sheriff's Department, which would include holding cells and a Sallyport, the total cost on that would be 53.3 million. If we were to build out the two additional courtrooms on the top floor, that adds about $2 million to it. So that's, that's the courtroom. Now, this, this would continue on, if we look at the next scheme, we're using the same information here and just adding on to it. So what would change out on the next scheme would be adding, adding on a, the Sheriff's Department and adding on 120-bed jail. So the numbers on that, to break it down, it is roughly 11 million to add on for the sheriff and 47 million for the jail, for a total of 111 million. So that's kind of the big picture on it. These numbers that we're presenting do not include the cost of the land or public utilities to get to the site. So both of those numbers would be added to that. I know there'd be a negotiation with the purchase of the lands, we aren't exposing those numbers, and then we'd have the cost of getting utility infrastructure up here. So Henry Carlson is here, and they're the ones that have done all the cost estimating on the details here. We can get into a lot of detail on it, as much as you'd like, so I guess we're here for to answer questions.
All right, thank you. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Strasberg? Is Myron Adams here? Hey, all right. Myron, can you come up, I'm putting you on the spot a little bit? Myron, a lot of, you're the city engineer for Canton, correct?
Yes, Myron Adam with JSA Engineers, designated city engineer for the city of Canton.
Good morning. So just, I know a lot, last, on the November 10th, I went back and watched that meeting, there were a lot of questions amongst the Commission about the sewer capability out on the 30 acres that we're looking at. Now, I've been told lots of things, but that particular location does have sewer out to it, is that correct?
The, there is existing, the city has existing sanitary sewer, gravity sewer in the highway, Highway 18. It basically serves Adams and the industrial park. So there is, there is still remaining capacity in that gravity sewer to make a, to make a connection to.
Would that support a courthouse? I mean, have you done any looking at what that sewer would support?
We have, let me see if I can show, show a few numbers here. Let's see here. I don't know if you may not be able to really read that.
I think we can zoom in on it.
Zoom in there. Let's see here, if I can get it in the right spot here. Okay. That's pretty close there, I guess. I'm mainly looking at the bottom of the table there. We broke out the, kind of the use over the next 40 years of, of that area on the west side of the community. So I can see on the far, the two columns on the very far right, if we add the jail facility and the services center to that line that's in the highway now, you know, over the next 10 years, you have about, you can increase the capacity by about another 140 acres of development. So you can serve the Lincoln County facility plus another 140 acres of development, not, you know, right now, you know, that, that line serves the industrial park and that's expanding. Decker just, you know, is in the process of building out in that ground and there's, I don't remember if there's 20 or 30 more acres that the, that the industrial park has available for development there. And that, you know, that development's going to be served by this sewer line as well. There is capacity out in that, in that line on the highway, up until you get to about maybe that 20, 25-year projection, when we start seeing more growth, not only in your services center and your jail, but also in all the development, you know, on the west side of town. So in that 20 to 25-year timeframe, that sewer that's in Highway 18 will be at capacity. So that will start to limit any further development, you know, not only for, you know, in the city's industrial park, areas to the north of Highway 18, but anything that you would be utilizing that sewer for.
All right, Commissioner, is there questions?
Okay, so if I understand this correctly, correctly right now, if we were to put this entire facility out there, that could be handled, no lift stations are necessary, it can be handled through gravity flow at present time?
You would need, for your facility, you would need a lift station to get your waste up into the highway.
Oh, okay.
Because right now that ground sits so, sits so much lower than the existing sewer line out there, you will still need a, you know, for your facility, so you don't have, so the, you know, a few months ago when the report was provided for the lift station down on West Road, that was to serve that entire development of, I can't remember the acreage to that. So that, that requires a much larger lift station, power service, et cetera. If you're just going to have, if it's just going to be your facility, you can take your waste in a much smaller lift station. Yes. And, you know, pump that, you know, directly into Highway, into a manhole on the Highway 18.
Okay.
So you're still going to need a lift station, power requirements, maintenance, but it's going to be less, substantially less than.
Yeah, because you're only servicing this facility.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Myron, I had heard some cost estimates on that, and I'd heard anywhere from 250,000 to 350,000. Did you look at that?
Something I have, I haven't penciled exact numbers for that, but that's what I would anticipate on, based on the numbers I've seen and what I've seen on, seen in the past. Okay.
Anybody have any questions?
I'll try to keep it brief.
I want all of your questions answered, Commissioner Poppins.
So how much lower is that property in, in topography to the current serviceable sewer line?
I want to say five or six feet. So depending on how close your facility ends up to the highway and the amount of fill you want to bring in, you know, can you serve that area by gravity? Depending on how much fill, kind of have to weigh that cost, cost benefit between adding 30 acres of fill or, you know, putting in that lift station.
I think some of the consideration is the topography, it may lead to needing some fill just to build the structure. Haven't done that yet, but just kind of curious if we need to bring in X amount, would it be worth bringing in a little bit more and didn't have to do it? Thank you for that question. So the proposed lift that, that you're speaking of, would that only service then the court or a proposed court and/or proposed jail out there, would that service additional area as well?
You can, you can set that up how you would like that. You could potentially, long-term, you know, the ultimate, ultimate.
The only question I'm trying to get at is that, is that the smallest lift that is in necessity for cost, or is it an overbuild for additional area?
That would be up to you, that would be so.
Yeah, I'm just referencing the, the initial numbers that were talked about today.
Sure, so that would just be for your.
Just for that.
Your facility.
Myron, have you been talking to Dick and to Henry Carlson Company to sync up and actually get true estimated construction numbers for what this would cost us?
No, not for any of the private, for the public utility side of things, no, we have not yet.
Okay.
So if the lift is put in and feeding into the current gravity, would the municipality inside Canton currently have to have any improvements? I know there was some discussion on the previous study that there is infrastructure that needs to be done within the current city limits, would that still need to take place?
Yes, two things, the gravity sewer from the Beaver Creek Lift Station down to the main lift station, which we are currently under design to do, to do that, and that will be reconstructed in '24. And the city is expending roughly $5 million for those improvements. When you start to reach that 20-year projection, the city will also need to be making some improvements to their main lift station, basically increasing some of the, increasing the motors and pumps in their main lift station.
And that would be completed by '25 in the current estimates?
That would be, well, yes, that'd be, that would be the current time estimate of when that would be done. And that's in, that's years, 20, 20, about 20 years out.
No, 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 the, the improvements that need to be done will be completed by the year 2025?
Yes, the most, it should be serviceable in the end of '24.
Okay. Do you have, and I think Mr. Nelson maybe could approach that, this question probably, but annexation contiguous property, is there any issues there with that site currently?
We fully anticipate that the county, if it built out on the east side, would voluntarily annex the property in. We've had discussions, I had them last night following planning and zoning with a representative with Mr. Johnson, about it made a lot of sense if they wanted to get the densities in their development, that they should think about annexing all of the property in as, as an ag service district, just so we could do some long-range planning. Issues out on the site or the road, in my perspective is, is how does everything fit together? What are you going to do about access off the road? Because I believe there are going to be a number of limited highway accesses off Highway 18. I brought Myron Adam here today because the question in the room was, is there capacity to serve your development? And if you look at, if you remember that sheet, we can, thank you Myron, right now we can service your 100, 120-person jail and the entire courtroom of facility and still have 143 acres left. 20 years down the road, if you were to build that jail and it was then at 240, we have 85 acres left that we could service with that sewer line. I'm here to tell you today that if the city of Canton is asked, will you allow us to hook up, the answer to that is, is going to be yes. We understand completely that there's a $5 million hole out there that you're trying to avoid. And I asked Myron to give me a rough estimate as to what the cost would be for a lift, a lift station. And of course, he understands he has to cooperate and work with Mr. Strasser after that, but from my perspective, $350,000 is a lot less expensive than $5 million. Did I answer your question, Mr. Poppins?
So far, yes. Question back to the improvements that are going to take place inside the city limits, is there any improvement, just, or adjustments to the depth of those current sewer lines that are going to be placed for gravity feed inside these city limits? I.e., the question is, will it affect gravity feed to the west?
No, not, not substantially, no.
Is that something that could be looked at if they're making such a vast improvement inside the city?
We've, a number of years ago, we made, when we improved Beaver Creek Lift Station for the city, a number of various options were identified at that point to deepen that sanitary sewer within the residential streets. That sewer needed to get to be 25 to 28 feet deep in the city street. And that, you know, that's just not realistic in a, you know, in a residential neighborhood to have sewer that deep. So basically maintaining the lift station was the, you know, the city's best option instead of going too deep with their sanitary gravity.
What would have been the cost, do you remember what, to go, to put in place a deeper lift at that time?
I don't, sorry.
I'll yield.
Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Adam? All right, if not.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Grimmon? I know you got these, some of these rough numbers. I know you got these, some of these rough numbers kind of last minute, but you've got some information for us on bonding?
Yes, so Tom Grimmon with Collier Securities. And yeah, so I ran some numbers yesterday, got some of this information for option, just option three. And of course, the numbers that are out there from, you know, from the meetings that we've been having, I'm not even sure which options we'd consider there, one and two, I guess. But so option three, I put together some, some numbers here. And this is based on a thirty-year term. So everyone can grab out their pencils and start figuring where they fall here. Now again, I, I think I've mentioned this, I think I've mentioned this before. Again, when we're doing these calculations at home or trying to figure out what our taxes are, it is, it is on the taxable value of your land and not, not the true full and true or what you think you could sell it for, what, you know, what John sold his land for down the street. It's, it's the taxable value on the little card, little information you get from the county auditor on an annual basis. And this is, so you can kind of see, I don't know if anybody has any specific questions, let you scan that.
Well, just to, for example, if I'm reading this correctly, so a three hundred thousand dollar home for option three, which would just be the administrative, or I shouldn't say administrative facility, but the courtrooms would cost the taxpayer ninety-three dollars and sixty cents a year?
That's correct.
And then following it across with the hundred and twenty-bed jail would be a hundred and ninety-five dollars and thirty cents.
That's correct, yep. And I have broken it down by, by month also because, you know, most people live on a budget, a monthly budget, and it, it gives them more perspective than maybe on an annual number of what they can fit into their annual budget. So that's there, too.
And on these two different options, these two new options that we were given, did you look at what a potential bond payment would be? Do you have any way to project that on either a monthly or annual basis?
Yes, let me grab that a second.
Thank you.
So you can see here that with, this is option one. This is the fifty-three point three million. With, with the way we've done the other options with the discussion with the groups, this is how it's laid out. This has the newest valuations that, and what I mean by that is the taxable value. So the, the values that, that'll twenty-two pay twenty-three have been figured into this. And that's on the next page. But here you can see that after, through the, kind of the growth period, you can see where the payment is around three point six million dollars. Annual payments, three point six, is that what you're asking for?
It is, it is.
Commissioner Landin?
And that number includes the hundred and twenty bed?
This one does not, no, no. This is just the fifty-three, let me get back up here, the fifty-three point three million.
Okay, and then did you run one with the jail as well?
And I did run, and, and this stuff's pretty linear. So you can see that a hundred and, a hundred and eleven million is almost double what fifty-three is. So then the, you know, the payment is a little over double what that is. And then, and you saw that on the levies, too. The levies were almost double for that. So as long as we're doing level debt service for thirty years, everything's pretty linear. You know, if somebody wanted to figure out what it would cost per million, you know, you can just do that math, too. And then if you wanted something that was seventy million dollars, you could really back into an easy number if someone likes math. But anyway, this is what it is for this issue.
And then, sorry if I'm getting too in the weeds here, but.
Nope.
For just the jail portion of it, do you have something similar to this that you could show us debt service for?
No, I did not.
Just the difference, it would just be the difference, correct?
Right, right.
All right. Anybody have questions for Mr. Grimmon?
Percentage-wise in a payment, because we had a very similar dollar amount the last time, how much has that changed? Do you know that, or can you compute that?
From, are we, are we going back to like?
Fifty million, I'm just, so the taxpayers know that if we continue to wait, how much more this continues to cost.
Right.
So it gives them an, you know, a representation of, you know, opportunity costs and things like that. If we continue to wait even longer, what could happen, so.
Right, as, as interest rates go up, I mean, we were looking at a fifty-million-dollar project that, that had the vote. And, and that, when that went down, the levy for that was per thousand was, you know, was about twenty, was it twenty-three cents or twenty, twenty-six cents, something like that. Whereas here, fifty-three million is about thirty-one cents. You can see that at the bottom, that's the dollar per, whoops. That's the dollar per thousand, that very last line. It's thirty-one, thirty-one point two cents right now. It was closer to twenty-six cents before, when, back when we had the vote for fifty million. So yes, to answer your question, as interest rates go up, obviously that will infect, that will affect the annual debt service and then the amount that has to be levied against the taxpayers within the county.
How long does a municipality or an entity like ours have to hold these bonds before they can refinance? If, if interest rates will become more favorable?
Right, so usually there's a, there's a lockout period, a call date. And right now, it's, it's, you know, the industry standard right now has kind of gone back to the way it was when I first started thirty years ago, is about ten years. But if interest rates get any lower and taxable rates come down, too, we can always do taxable refinancings. We've, we did a few of those in the past. But if you want to do a tax-exempt refinancing, you have to wait until the call date. And that is, that would be around ten years.
Tom, help me understand. We're looking at these numbers and we're bonding for everything. What happens when this courthouse is paid off?
Okay, good question, right. So this levy is in place as long as the courthouse is out, well, it's not even that. It's, it's in place for thirty years. That's how you guys set it up.
Yeah.
It's for thirty years. So once it, once it is paid off, it goes away. I mean, that levy disappears.
Okay, is that a possibility of just, when this courthouse is paid off, continuing on with that same levy? I mean, I, I just think of Harrisburg, when they, when they were telling us, you vote yes and we won't raise your taxes. And they just continued paying on existing bonds. Can you help me understand how that works?
Well, so what they've done in Harrisburg is they've, they've set the limit at twelve dollars per thousand unless they've changed it. And then that goes down based on the new valuations that they get, not just inflationary, but the new businesses and the new homes that are built. So they try and maintain that twelve dollars per thousand, but every time a bond issue is paid off, it still comes off of that. So what then they do is they come back in with a new bond issue and, and keep it around that twelve dollars per thousand. It's not a continuation, that actual levy for whatever project, if they've paid it off, goes away.
Goes away.
They come in and tell you that, that your taxes are not going to go up based on where they were last year when the new bond comes on. And that's how they perpetuate that or carry that forward. Sometimes they drop off, there's like a year in between before they do a bond issue. So they're down around, you know, ten dollars and fifty cents or something like that, and then they bring it back up to that twelve dollars. So there may be, it may seem like a tax increase. If somebody's out there listening to this, it may seem like a tax increase, but it is within that twelve dollars per thousand.
So what would happen when we pay this off in twenty-eight, is it? Our courthouse is paid off?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six?
Right. It's coming up quick.
So our bonds are paid off. Why can't we do the very same thing using that particular levy that we used back in whenever, two thousand and eight or two thousand and six, when we built this courthouse?
And you could, you, you, we could show the numbers instead of showing, say, the thirty-one cents, thirty-one point two cents here on this. We could, we could take what that levy is right now, and I don't know off the top of my head, I want to say it's four or five cents right now, and you kind of apply that, subtract that off of that. As that comes off, then that four cents could be part of the thirty-one cents. So your additional costs are only going to be twenty, twenty-seven cents, let's say. Or let's round up to five and make it easier on my head. So it'd be like twenty-six cents would be the additional for the fifty-three million, or sixty cents would be the additional for the hundred and eleven million, if that makes sense.
So that the initial payments would be higher for the first couple of years until those bonds were paid off and then reissue them?
Yes, yes and no. What we would do is we'd structure it, if we sold bonds tomorrow, let's say, we would structure with lower principal payments, as you can see. And in essence, we haven't really taken that into account here. This is more of a growth deal. But you can see that, we can structure in such a way that you can see where the payments over here are actually lower to start with, and then they grow more with the growth, not, not with paying off the courthouse, that was not what we were contemplating here. And then it, then it maxes out here. But you can see that's where, that's kind of what we've done. And what we can do, so that the impact to the taxpayers is not any greater in the first few years, it's the same. So once the, once the addition is paid off, they won't feel any additional impact there. And they won't feel it initially either. They'll just, it'll just kind of roll into that four cents or five cents that they're paying right now will just roll into the new bond issue. Does that make sense?
Tom, what was the growth rate fact? This is what we see in front of us here, this is dynamic financing, right? It's not static.
A little, a little bit, I mean, typically when you see geo-bonds and you see a large, a large project like this where you're actually building for the future, there's growth that's going on in the community. So you're trying to capture a little bit of that.
What's the growth rate factor that you?
Two percent.
Okay.
Two percent is what we've looked at. Very, I think it's a very conservative number for what, what we've seen in Lincoln County.
I think the fan network was three point four, was the actual growth rate annually.
Yes, very good questions. Yeah, if that's something you'd like to look at, we could, you know, we could look at that also when we get to that point.
Anybody else have any questions?
And of course, this, you know, we could figure the shop into that, too. You know, that comes off a few years after that, too. So you could actually keep that levy that you're talking about. If we're going to shoot for a certain levy amount, we could try and shoot for that so that it stays that way. Because the nice thing about that is, I mean, if we look at where the levy was at, and again, some people don't care, but if you look at where we were at for the levy for this addition when we first started, I got the numbers in my thing, but, I mean, it was at least double what we're at right now. And the reason why it's down to five cents, it was higher than that, is that the valuation has grown so much since two thousand and seven, when we first did this, two thousand and six, when we first built this. So, so it's actually lowered. So if you were actually still at that same levy and were able to do that and you maintained that, you would have been collecting additional dollars through that whole period of time. But again, that's not how government works. They don't allow you to sock money away, even though some people might say that's not what's happening.
So growth may be a good thing after all.
Growth is good. I think overall, I think it is good.
Yeah.
Like any business, you got to pay your cost of goods, and this is the cost of growth.
So when I look at your chart on the options with the taxable value and the monthly and yearly amounts, are those, are those the highest numbers that people would anticipate paying with the growth that we're having? Those numbers would just continue to go down, correct?
Well, they could, I mean, it is, it is factored, there is a growth, like we just talked about, in there. So if you don't meet your two percent growth, then it could go, it could go higher. What, what really, good question. What really I think is going to happen, you're going to see growth substantially above the two percent. You're going to see the four percent, at least for the next five or six years, because of what's going on. You look at Eighty-Fifth Street, I mean, all the stuff that's going to happen over the next few years, and it's not pie in the sky, stuff is just going to happen. You can see their numbers, it'll just be like this annex where we started off at, you know, a dollar fifty, and now we're down to five cents or whatever, sixty cents it was, I think. But anyway, now we're down to five cents on this annex because of all the growth that's happened.
So in the Eighty-Fifth Street you mentioned, Tom, if that has a projected economic impact of about, almost three, what, two-point-four billion dollars? I mean, we're not talking millions, we're talking billions here. That can have a significant impact.
It will have a significant impact, yes.
Yes.
When you think about it right now, your valuation right now is eight, eight billion dollars, is that what it is? Eight point eight? Yeah, eight point eight billion dollars. You add two billion more to that, I mean, that's twenty-five percent increase. So your taxes could go down by twenty-five percent over the next ten years.
Just to be careful about that, though, that's.
I'm sorry.
That's two billion in economic.
Right.
Revenue or growth, it's not in property tax valuation, correct?
Yes, and, and I bought, fell into my own, my own trap there by giving you what full and true would be and not what taxable would be. So as I tell taxpayers to pay attention, I should pay attention, too, and you're right. It is, the taxable value would probably be much less than the two billion of economic development.
Because as a county, we don't capture sales tax, we only capture the property tax.
Right.
So it would only be based upon what the value of that land increases to be after it gets built out.
Right, the value of the land and, and the fixed property that goes on it. And it would be at, you know, basically eighty-five percent. I think Lincoln County is closer to like ninety-two percent, ninety-two percent of what full and true is. So if someone's telling you it's a hundred-million-dollar building or a billion-dollar building, you're only going to get, you know, I always figure a rule of thumb, eighty-five percent of that you get to use as taxable value.
Yeah.
So yeah, we, maybe be careful, but still, you still see a large impact from that intersection. And, and you still don't even know what the full development can be out there because look what happened to Empire Mall, and that was so undervalued when they first pitched it, and they hesitated on that. Everybody today would sign up for it and say, hey, if you can put this in our community, put it in our community. So anyway.
Thank you, Tom. Anybody have any other questions they'd like to ask while he's here? All right, if not. Sheriff, would you come up and just answer a few general questions about numbers? I know we're coming up to the end of the year. Do you have any quantifiable numbers on prisoner care just this past year on what you spent, including transport, the housing costs in Lincoln County and those sort of things? And maybe Sherry can help you out with that?
It's kind of, it's, it's teetering right at two million dollars. It's not, it's not over that. Our inmate numbers are actually down this year, which I don't know what the answer to that is, but we're, we're sitting at probably fifty, fifty-one or fifty-two today. Where earlier in the year, we were at seventy-five, so.
Sure. We've been talking about a hundred and twenty-bed jail, is that, I mean, and what's your feel for that? I mean, is that too many beds right now, or is it not enough based on classifications that you would have to make?
I think a hundred and twenty beds would be sufficient for the next five to ten years. They would allow us to do some, some housing of inmates from other jurisdictions. I don't think it's a twenty-year solution.
Okay, and your two million, you say, is that include all the costs of transportation for even when you're processing and taking prisoners into Sioux Falls after an arrest?
Wouldn't be hard to figure out, prisoner care plus wages.
Prisoner care is, so far for this year is one point six five six. And then medical, well, transport is just under six thousand.
Then figure wages for the jail.
Yeah.
Which I think is roughly three hundred thousand.
Yep.
Okay, so just under two.
Two million dollars.
Okay, all right, that's really all the questions I had right now.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Would you like me to share, I reached out to Sheriff Milstead on our current situation.
Please.
With them, would you like that information? I asked him to give us something, Commissioner Schmidt reached out to me and wanted, actually, I think it was Commissioner Landin that asked what we could get in writing for, for Minnion County about our future jail space. And I'm just going to read you part of the email here, I'm, he said, I'm sure they would. But there's no guarantee other than what we have in contract, which is an additional two years. Our numbers spiked, but for the last week or so have come back down to a reasonable level. Our thoughts would be to extend the contract on a regular basis based on how we are doing locally and what our demands are. This would allow you to, this would allow us to give you time to move forward with your own solution should the numbers start climbing beyond our capacity. But kind of a scary email when I have nowhere to go. when I have nowhere to go with these inmates. We can put a temporary courtroom in the commissioner's room, but I can't put inmates in the auditor's office. So we're going to become, it's going to become a crisis that isn't, there's not going to be a very easy solution if we keep kicking this can. Now, I understand the numbers that have come in are a lot bigger than the first run we had at this. However, I think if we don't do option with the jail, that we're going to get a courthouse built, and we're going to start tearing walls down that we just put up to add the jail on. That doesn't seem like a very good business strategy if we were doing this with our own money.
Is there, your current, we're paying per bed, what, now, Sheriff?
It's ninety-seven thirty-four today. At the first of the year, it'll be one oh nine seventeen, I believe.
And if we did that on a yearly, there's no guarantee where he stops?
The only guarantee we have right now is two years, forty-five beds. The price is subject to whatever they decide the price is. So we have no, there's no breaks. If they tell us it's two hundred and fifty dollars a day, it's two hundred and fifty dollars a day. There is a formula that they use to come up with what it costs them to house our inmates, and that formula changes to one oh nine. I believe it's seventeen.
Steve, we always talk about, you know, what if, but let's just, let's play that. So you get a notice from Minnion County saying, "We will not be able to house your prisoners as of X date." What would you do? Because we're going to have fifty, seventy-five people that need to be incarcerated. What do you do?
So I think realistically, the email we'll get is, "We can't take any more of your inmates." So we're at forty or fifty, and they're maxed out, so we've got to move ten. Our first option would be Union County, which would probably be able to take ten. However, they're specific on the inmate. If it's a problem inmate, they won't take it. So it's got to be, it's got to be a
A good inmate.
Good inmate. And those people just aren't being held anymore. The good inmates are on either EM or out on bond. It's the people that need to be in jail, and people know that if they go to these other jails, all they've got to do is be a problem to get back to Sioux Falls. So that's where the jam is going to come up. I don't think they're going to tell us, "You need to move your fifty inmates." I don't think that's realistic, ever. I think that the real problem is going to be, we have fifty there, we can only hold fifty. Now you've got to start moving people around. And our options are, Vermillion will have a jail in a couple of years. I don't know if they'll have any space, but Charles McCounty will take inmates. It just becomes a logistical nightmare, really. And it becomes a problem for their attorneys to be able to communicate with their clients. There's, it's not just a nightmare for us. It's a nightmare for the whole system.
How many options do you have to house women?
It would be the same. Most jails will take either.
Sheriff, how many new FTEs do we have to hire if we built a hundred and twenty-person jail?
We have that from the Peterson study. I don't have that with me. I think the estimate at two years ago was to be about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to run, to run a jail. Obviously, with times have changed, so I think safely you could add ten percent. However, that was a hundred and eighty, a hundred and eighty-bed jail. But I could get those numbers.
Thank you, Sheriff. Anybody from the citizens group? I'd like to invite you up. I know you've been talking to the public and going to these public meetings. I'd like to hear how that's been going from your perspective.
Madam Chairman, my name is Larry Nelson. I'm one of the members of the citizen committee. And our committee wants to go on record that you should do build both a courtroom facility and a jail. It's time to do both of them. We don't think you have a lot of choices. We're pleased to see what the numbers are, I mean, that it ends up being affordable. It's not a shock, but we do not believe that you can kick the can down the road anymore, and we wanted to stress that to you, that today is the time to move forward on both.
Thank you. We are going to take public input on this agenda item. If anybody does want to come up and give us any other input.
Paul Paulson, one three zero nine Western Route Ivan, Sioux Falls. I've been a resident in Lincoln County all my life, as well as my, starting with my great-grandfather. But I've been on this committee, and we've had several meetings, lots of meetings. And we've met with Dick here, and he's led us through part of this. And going to these evening meetings with the public has been really the enlightening part. Most people think that we need to do this once and do it right. Do a bond, do it right, be done. They don't want you guys to come back and ask for more money. That's the biggest point that we've heard. And when we're talking about these taxes all the time, everybody says their taxes are high. Well, I looked at mine, and sixty-six percent of my taxes go to the school. Thirteen percent, I have land in my township, thirteen percent of the money goes to the township. And same way in Sioux Falls. I live in the Sioux Falls city. And twenty-two percent go to the county. Those aren't, they don't quite add up. They add up to more than a hundred percent, but it's close. And I think all the people look at is that bottom line, and I understand that. But I think when we're talking this money, the amount of money we're looking at, they need to see how much the county is using of their money to operate, because everybody thinks the county's getting the whole hundred percent. So I just, I guess I'm for agreeing with Larry. We need to go for the courthouse and the jail, do it all at once, and be done with it. And thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to come up?
Betty Yotten, four six seven eight seven two seventy-third Street T. I'm also a citizen member of the courthouse improvement committee, and I, too, want to emphasize that the citizen members of the courthouse improvement committee are one hundred percent behind buying the Greenfield property and building both the courtrooms and jail at the same time. At all of the past public meetings and conversations with Lincoln County residents, no one wants their property taxes raised. But everyone knew that Lincoln County was obliged by state law to provide courtrooms and a jail. There was only one person via a third party who didn't believe we needed either. The quote was, "Sheriff Milstead will provide for us." Well, however, the earlier testimony shows that this is no longer correct or valid. Ninety-nine point nine percent of Lincoln County citizens again said, according to Paul, "Do it right, do it once, and don't come back to us again." We've had no real vocal opposition, to my knowledge. Two of you are attorneys, but all of you know that South Dakota law demands we provide courtrooms and jail. For all five of you, again, no one wants to raise property taxes, but at this point, there is no other option. And with the best thought and plans available, on December sixth, there should be a five-to-zero affirmative vote to build the justice center to include a jail, which is option number four. And I want to thank Dick Strasberg and his team for what they've done for Lincoln County. And as far as alternative financing, there was only one of you who supported legitimate legislation last session to help pay for the justice center with a jail with a halfpenny sales tax, even though you were all asked to do so before the legislature committees. I'm hoping if it's presented again next session, you'll support it. It passed through House taxation, the House floor, the Senate taxation, but it died on the Senate floor because mainly it wasn't supported by our own county commissioners. Another way to fund the Greenfield property is to make it a priority to sell the Lincoln County T property and apply the funds to that. Since the original courthouse improvement committee's summary that the jail be put on the back burner, our options have evolved now into a critical need. Bottom line, thank you for being involved in this project, being forward-thinking, being conscious of taxpayer monies, and voting unanimously for the Greenfield project to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioner Chad Skiles, eight twenty North Dakota Street here in Canton. Also a citizen member of the courthouse improvement committee. And basically, I just want to summarize what the last three people said, and to stress to the commission that we have vetted every single option that we have processed and worked through the last fifteen, sixteen months now that this committee has been together. The countless hours of committee meetings, meetings with the judges, meetings with all of the other players, individual meetings with the commissioners, tours, we went to Brookings, we did a tour. We've done, as citizens, done that all on our own time and as volunteers, and we've done that gladly. The reason being is we feel very strongly about this project. I agree with everything that the last three speakers. The one thing that the citizen portion of the expansion committee has proudly stated time and time again since the very beginning, and that is, is that we have maintained a complete, open, transparent, honest communication. We have worked so hard at vetting every single thing that we've come. Have things evolved? Absolutely. That's true of any project of this magnitude. And we just certainly hope that the commission will come together and follow the recommendations of all of the committee members, the experts, and let's move this project forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to come up and give public input? All right. If not, we'll close the floor on that agenda item. I do anticipate asking for some sort of resolution on December sixth, so, and hopefully some of you folks can come back and join us that day to answer any additional questions that might pop up after today. Thank you. Move on to our next agenda item.
This is a public hearing for, excuse me, this is a public hearing for an appeal of a decision by the Lincoln County Planning Commission to deny conditional use permit number use zero zero six eight twenty twenty-two to allow a public utility facility, a maintenance facility.
Good morning, Commissioners. Toby Brown, representing County Planning. This item is an appeal of a denial of a decision by the planning commission for a conditional use permit for a public utility facility, specifically a maintenance facility. The appellant for this item is the applicant, East River Electric Cooperative, Inc. I'll give you a little background on the application, and then I'll explain kind of what your options are for this morning. So this application, again, is, the applicant for this item is East River Electric Cooperative, Inc. This property or parcel is approximately five miles to the northeast of the city of Lenox. This is at the two seventy-sixth Street, Interstate twenty-nine exit. Subject parcel, as you can see, is currently zoned A1 agricultural. It is undeveloped, or it doesn't have any buildings on it at this time. The applicant did submit with the application a site plan, which I will show you has been revised. Again, the applicant is proposing to utilize the property for a maintenance building for their business, which is a public utility facility and allowable under this use. The proposed building would be twelve thousand square feet in size and would house equipment for their operations. This, as I mentioned, the planning commission did deny this application, but since the denial, staff has worked with the applicant, and the applicant has revised essentially the application that was presented previously to the planning commission. I'll let the applicant, as a presentation, we'll go into more detail, but I'll give you a brief summary. Is that primarily they've added a stormwater detention pond to the property. That was one of the issues that was brought up at the planning commission meeting, as well as there was originally proposed two driveways into the facility. Only one driveway is being proposed at this time, and that would be on the north side of the property. The next thing is, is that there was, there's some fencing around the property. The applicant originally proposed to put barbed wire fencing along that fencing that has been removed for aesthetic concerns for the neighbors, as well as there's some additional trees and screening that have been added to the site. So originally, with the application, staff did recommend approval of this to the planning commission. Staff identified that this application is consistent with the Lincoln County Code of Ordinances. This is another instance where it's an investment and update by a utility service provider in our area, because of the level of development and growth that is occurring in our county, but also in the adjacent growth areas as well. And so the three options that you have before you this morning, after you conduct a public hearing and listen from the applicant or the appellant, is to either uphold, which is the denial of this application, to overrule it, to overturn it, or amend it. Staff, if you go with what direction, would say, if you're going to amend this, there is some, seven conditions that were recommended by staff in the original approval, that we would recommend that you amend that to say that the site plan would go with the updated revised site plan of October tenth of twenty twenty-two. With that, we'd have to answer your questions if you're staff, but otherwise, the applicant is present this morning to share with you a presentation.
Any commissioners have questions for staff?
Would you run those maps again, Toby, please?
Yep.
So this is an expansion of their existing site?
Nope. This will be a new site for them. Southeastern Electric is to the northwest of this property. East River Electric is, and they'll go into the explanation of that, but they're essentially a partner with Southeastern Electric. They maintain the high-voltage power lines throughout the county, so.
Keep going up, if you would.
Anybody have any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is the applicant or a representative for the applicant present? Good morning. Can you just state your name and address?
Morning. Dre Wire. I live in Madison, South Dakota. I am the permitting and construction coordinator for East River Electric. First of all, I'd say thank you to Toby and your staff for all your help on this project thus far, and thank you to the commission for having us here to listen to our conditional use permit application for our Sioux Falls maintenance outpost facility. With me today, I have John Sido, our project services manager, Mark Hoffman, our chief operations officer, and Danny Brown, our East River Electric, our general counsel. Scroll down here. All right. East River Electric is a not-for-profit transmission power cooperative. We serve twenty-five member systems, and we manage a forty thousand square mile territory in eastern South Dakota and western Minnesota. We have three thousand two hundred and thirty-seven miles of transmission line in our territory and two hundred and fifty-two substations. So in South Dakota, eastern South Dakota, we serve forty-one counties, and in western Minnesota, we have twenty-two counties that we also serve. We deliver wholesale power to our members, and they, in return, power the homes, schools, businesses, and other member owners in our service territories. In Lincoln County, it's Southeastern Electric, so without East River Electric providing wholesale power to Southeastern, there would be no power for Southeastern Electric to supply to its members. With the thirty-three hundred miles of transmission line, it takes a lot of work to strategically locate crews and keep the lights on. So what we're doing with this, here we go, with this application is we're trying to get our outposts where the meters are, where the power is needed. In this map, you can see our current outpost. They are represented with the red stars, and the shaded colors there are their territories that they manage. So with the growth in the Sioux Falls area, we're trying to restructure our territories to better represent where the power is needed. So what we're trying to do is improve the locations and help better respond to emergency situations in the territory. situations in the territories. We're just trying to better maintain our system and get our people where they need to be for quicker responses to emergency situations. What we're planning on doing is we're going to be combining our Brandon and Beersford facilities to better serve our members. The new Sioux Falls outpost is a much better logistically center location for our meters and our members. It'll just simply allow us to better serve our members in time of emergencies or when quick responses are necessary. Our Beersford facility is just far too south for where our core meters are located. Here are the concerns we believe the Planning Commission had originally, and we feel we've done a good job of addressing these concerns. The drainage concerns, we did not have our final civil plans. They are included in the packet. There was concern on screening and landscaping, security fence with barbed wire, additional township communication and utility facility classification, and what Southeastern's future plans were for that entire facility. Lincoln County and East River both have a lot going on in this area, so below are some of the needs for this utility facility. We will be close to the expanding load growth in the, that is south of Sioux Falls. Currently, there are 38,500 meters in this area, so that's each house, each business, each individually read meter. The peak demand is 160 megawatts in the Sioux Falls area. This is nearly one quarter of East River's system load, so that's a very large portion of what we have going on in the, in our territory. And annually, we are seeing about 1,250 meters added in this territory. The new base location for our equipment will better assist on the south side of the system. So East River will have equipment in Madison, Sioux Falls, and Aberdeen. This will house our major, our bucket trucks, our digger, the real important equipment that we do have and that we need for response situations. And I'll add for better road access from the Sioux Falls location, and the facility will be a central location to respond to maintenance and emergency situations. So this site and future growth in this area is a big deal to us. We will be able to optimally serve and maintain the power in this area from this facility and the growth. In this slide, we're looking at the utilities in the Sioux Falls area. Currently, there's 391 miles of transmission line that we manage in the Sioux Falls area. There are 38 distribution substations, five delivery substations and switching stations, and as I mentioned before, 38,500 member meters. We broke that down to Lincoln County. In Lincoln County, we have 113 miles of transmission line, 14 substations, and 11,840 member meters. And that number is growing very rapid, as you guys are learning with your jail as well, just on the population growth. So as you can see right here, can you see my cursor? There we go. Right in this area, south of Sioux Falls, there's a lot of different colors. So on this map, the yellow, purple, and blue represent the high concentration of meters. You can see there's a cluster right here in the Sioux Falls and Lincoln County area. Those colors are the largest concentration, and you can see in the whole eastern South Dakota, there's a few other orange dots. Well, those are the lowest. That's the 750 to 1,000 meter count, but the mass of the meter counts are right here in your Lincoln County area. Here, we're looking at a picture of our current Beersford Maintenance Outpost. This facility is, it's really, it's a smaller outdated facility. We've outgrown it. It's not centrally located to where our meters are currently in our, in our service area. We believe this facility, or I believe this facility, it's roughly 50 years old. So from this picture, you can see we really do take good care of our properties. For a 50-year-old building, it's kept up well, and the area looks nice. Here, we're looking at the footprint of our Brandon Maintenance Outpost. You can get a visual of the outside of the building, kind of what we're looking at and what we intend this building to be similar to. The proposed site here, we're down in the southeast corner, as Toby mentioned, and Southeastern Electric's up here in the northwest corner. This site will allow good access to the highway interstate and service area south of Sioux Falls. The highway access is kept to a road intersection. We won't be pulling our trucks out onto the highway. We'll be pulling out onto this township road, so we'll be accessing a highway at a intersection. So that's safer for our crews and just traffic in general when we're, if we're having to respond to storm situations, poor conditions. The driveway approach has a clear view to the slower traffic, so again, township road, the slower traffic, and you can see from our approach here, far to the north and far to the south, just for safety of our own crews. And it's advantageous access to nearby utility substations and transmission lines of routine maintenance and emergency storm response in the area. The proposed site is compatible with future plans of the area, and we do feel we are a good fit for the area. So in the planning and zoning meeting, we were asked what Southeastern's plans or intent were for the remainder of that section. So Brad Chardine did write a letter to the commission here, kind of on their intent for the property. We pulled out a couple bullet points there. I'm not going to read this letter, just, I don't want to take up any more of your time today, but it spells out what their intent is for that area. And I, one thing I did want to point out is that both Southeastern and their members do want us in this area, and how critical it is for us to be there to support their members as well. On this slide, we're looking at the FEMA floodplain map. As you can see, that northeast corner, there is a zone A designated floodplain. So like, as we, as I mentioned, we decided to go down here in the southeast corner where there is no floodplain. We were asked in the planning meeting, planning and zoning meeting, why we didn't pursue this, this area here. Well, one, Southeastern doesn't own it yet. It's part of, in that letter, of what their plan or their intent is, but there just physically isn't enough good buildable space for what we're looking for, and Southeastern does have future plans to develop their facility that direction. Right here, we're looking at the maintenance center site plan. As Toby mentioned, we removed the, the south approach, so we worked with the township to have just the one single north approach. We've added additional screening here to the east and to the front edge of the facility. This back gravel lot will be optimal or plenty big enough for us to pull our pole trucks into and turn around, so we're not having to try to turn around in the road ever. We'll be able to swing a truck around back here and get turned around. The fenced-in area around the entire facility will give us a complete secure site, and we do intend to store all of our equipment inside. Out here in the screen space, we will more than likely store some poles and spools of conductor for just emergency or storm restoration purposes in this area. Here, we're looking at the exterior renderings of our facility. You can see we've added the trees to the east of the, east of the facility, and we do intend these trees will be roughly six-foot spade-in trees. We will have water on site to help maintain and get those trees to a healthy, healthy life until they're able to succeed on their own. We will ask a local landscaper to help us select what species will work best and be the most successful and screen and cover that, that area. They will also be the ones installing these trees for us. We did, as Toby also mentioned, we removed the barbed wire fence, the barbed wire from the top of the fence, so we'll simply just have a chain-linked fence around this facility. Here's our proposed outpost floor plan. You can see we'll have offices right here for, currently, we have about four to six field maintenance linemen. Right here on the north end, there'll be two offices for, we refer to them as hot offices. Those will be where engineering and management will occupy in the time of a storm crisis. You know, if we need to get more, more assistance or more help to this area, they will work out of these two, two offices. Right down here, we have a shop and tool workspace area. So out on the first few bays of the shop, we'll have room for two store, or for two service pickups, a bucket truck, a digger truck, UTV and tractors here. This final bay or bay and a half will have for additional space for any equipment we'd need to be, have stored for any projects we have in the area or stage for storm or emergency crisis situation. This building is 150 by 80 steel structure, and it will have 20-foot sidewalls. It's East River's guideline, too. We won't, we don't try, we don't keep any equipment outside. Everything will be stored inside, so you won't see it from the road as much as possible, I guess. We keep it all inside, so it's ready to be dispatched in the time of a storm and when it's needed. Here's our civil design work. As you can see, they've designed in a drainage swale here on the south end of the property for us, and it does curve up on the southwest corner here to catch any drainage from our property, and it will drain into this detention pond in the southeast corner of the property. Will also catch any drainage from the north that will be caught in this ditch and run into our right-of-way ditch here to the south. So we will have really minimum impact on the drainage of the property. In fact, we'll probably be making it better just by simply following any design standards that are, that are out there. Here, we're looking at the township approach from the La Valley Township. They are in support of this project. We've worked with them, as Toby and I mentioned earlier. We've removed the south approach, so we've updated to just one single approach on this property, and we've also updated the approach to call out East River Electric's name, so our name is on the permit. We have set up a hall agreement or a road hall agreement to continue throughout the construction of the project, and we will maintain that also through the 2023 calendar year if need be. And, you know, with the limited traffic in and out of our facility, we don't really anticipate any damage or any issues with the road, but if they do encounter any unnecessary damage to the road, we will work with the La Valley Township to make things right. So here, just to wrap up in summary of the reasons for the approval of this conditional use permit for our outpost facility, are the, the local growth continues to increase dramatically, causing East River to reposition our resources in this area. East River has listened to the concerns and made reasonable efforts to mitigate and control potential, and control potential negative effects to the area. And the use of this property is compatible with adjacent properties in the, in the district, and East River needs this facility in order to improve emergency response and serve the growing needs of our members' facilities and equipment in the southeast area of our territory. So if the power is off, businesses are losing money, and folks are just not happy in general. So with that, we stand by for any questions you guys may have for us.
Thank you. Is there any proponents that would like to testify in favor of this conditional use permit? Anybody else? How about any opponents? All right, hearing and seeing none. Do the Commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Go ahead.
Thank you for making some changes, pretty substantial, to what your original application was. One question that I have that maybe you're not aware of, in storm events, the road to the north of there often becomes impassable because of excessive rain. I'm assuming that will be your normal route when the road is passable. Can you identify or have you thought of what the other route will be off of and onto that property when the road is not passable?
I'd have to ask John, if we, we have an option to the south, you know, obviously, but it's not ideal.
It would be straight south or south of First Corner and east. I just want to make sure that the township, if that's addressed, because I know you do, did make a, speak with the township on that, so.
Yep. We, you know, we, we would probably have to work with them to get it to a point, maybe to where that, to the north is a usable section. I guess I, I'm not familiar with that exact location.
Unfortunately, we all have heard about the, that creek or the draw crossing there, washing out the road in a heavy rain event. And rainy, heavy rain events often are tied to storms, which really pushes your responsibility to get out, so.
So we'll, yeah, we'll have to pick an alternate route to the south. Has that been mapped out and all, but that'll be a part of our process.
Very good. Thank you. That's the only question, ma'am chair.
Thank you. Other questions by the Commission?
Madam Chair, I've been impressed with all the facilities and the changes that they've made, to the extent, and Commissioner Poppins, maybe they will upgrade the road to such a standpoint, there won't be a watch out. But I, Madam Chair, I'd move for approval.
Well, just a second. Toby, the seven conditions that were changed or added, I'm not seeing those in my share drive, but can you just run through those again, please, for purposes of emotion?
So these were the seven conditions that staff recommended in the staff report. The only modification would be number one, to change that date to October 10th of 2022. Otherwise, the rest of the conditions would still be applicable.
Okay. So Commissioner Schmidt, if I am understanding you correctly, you would like to approve but amend the conditional use permit?
Correct.
And that would include the conditions as outlined on the screen there?
Correct.
All right. Is there a second?
Just so I understand this, because I think I'll make the second, but looking at your staff report, Toby, there's eight conditions, not seven.
Right. That's why I was asking.
Is one of them redundant because it's already been performed, or did you just make a mistake?
I just made a mistake, so it's actually eight conditions. Yep. I like seven, but sometimes we go eight.
Thank you. Is that a second, then, Commissioners?
Yeah, if you doubt, all eight is a second.
And your, that was your intent, Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
All right. I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, we call a roll.
Commissioner Aaronson?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, everybody, for showing up. Next agenda item, electrical work at the Fairgrounds.
Good morning, Commissioners. John Romble, Building Superintendent. So first thing on my list is the approval of the one and only bid that we got for the electrical work for the Shoaring Building. That number came in at $15,950.03, and Miller Electric from Ethan, South Dakota, is the one that bid that. I was anticipating more bidders, but this number falls in line with the numbers that I was hearing. Just more than anything, the people that I thought might bid it felt they might not be able to complete it before the end of this budget year.
Any questions for staff? If not, is there, what do you guys want to do?
Public input.
Public input.
Oh, public input. Sorry. I thought I was doing so good with that, too. Good morning.
Good morning. Betty Otten, 4678-7273, Third Street, NT. Could I speak to both four and five?
Sure.
Okay. Well, per the Lincoln County video on August 24th, 2021, John had $44,900 in his budget to do a 4-H project. However, bids came in way over budget. He said he could come up with another $10,000 from his budget, but that project would still be $44,000 short. Using the sale of equipment from the closed dump station and other rental funds for the 4-H, to me, is wrong. These are taxpayer funds and should have been used for other projects like roads and et cetera. So after discussions that he had with the 4-H Foundation, they only wanted to release ten to fifteen thousand dollars for that project regarding the dirt work. So taxpayers have, at that point, spent almost one million dollars on this 4-H project, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the property, and nine hun, or ninety-four thousand one hundred, one hundred and nine dollars and thirty-six cents on site grading improvements and other, a couple other things. The Lincoln County Commission approved this spending on a five-to-zero vote. Have these expenses ever been paid back by the 4-H Foundation? And now again today, we have an additional request for eight thousand five hundred dollars and fifteen thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars for the 4-H property. Why are Lincoln County taxpayers paying for these 4-H expenses when it should be paid for by the 4-H Foundation? Who is paying for the utility bills out there, sewer and water bills and insurance? Is the county or the 4-H Foundation? Um, you all talk about um, taxpayers want to know what's going on, so I'm just asking. Lincoln County has critical issues ahead obeying South Dakota codified law, providing courtroom and jail space. So I urge you to make the 4-H Foundation responsible for all these expenses now and going forward. I would also urge you to work with our fan members to develop both a short-term and long-term strategic financial plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to come up? If not, uh, John, do you want to, do you have any information on some of those comments?
I mean, I don't have anything specific, but I, you know, our, our, my understanding was, our agreement was the county would pay for the utility side of this project and 4-H Foundation raised the money for the structural improvements to the facility, and simple as that.
Sherry, are they reimbursing anything for the utilities?
No.
They raised the money for the building, didn't they, John?
Correct.
What was it costing them?
Um, a hundred and ninety thousand dollars plus.
Questions, comments, thoughts?
Just to flush this out a little bit, when we say we're responsible for utilities, does that mean up to the front door of the building, or does that mean inside the building? I think that's where the rub is here. You know, you build a building, you would assume that the owner of the building, or I shouldn't say owner, but the people saying they're responsible for building the building, put in all the outlets, do all the electrical work and put the boxes in, and then we pay for the expenses of getting the electric to the building, right? I think that's where kind of the rub is here. I don't know, I mean.
I, I could see where you're saying that, and I could say, moving forward with additional buildings, maybe that's the way i- it should be presented to the 4-H Committee, the grounds committee. But uh, that was not really their perception of this when we moved forward with this.
No, I'd agree. I don't think we really flushed that out, did we?
Right. This building is, the, the, the electrical utility side of the inside of the building turned out to be, quite honestly, a lot more money than I would have anticipated, but part of that was because it's a commercial-grade building, which going, when we first started this, we weren't expecting to have to put security lighting on both sides of every entry door and that sort of thing, you know? But because of the fact that it does hold people for events, a certain number, it's, you know, it's just coming in at a higher grade electrical project than what I was originally anticipating, but.
Other questions?
No, I'm ready to move forward.
All right.
I would move a motion to, are we done with public comment?
I don't think there was anybody else that wanted to comment, but if there is, please let me know.
I would, motion to move forward with the uh, electrical bid and to the 4-H facility.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
All I'd say is let's flush that out moving forward with the 4-H. This time, the county, it's the county's issue this time, but moving forward, I think it's the 4-H's issue moving forward.
All right, I'll make sure I share that with them.
Thank you. Sean, we call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy.
I'm going to vote yes, but I, I do agree with, on what Commissioner Aaron's is saying. Like, electrical work, that's a pretty broad, utilities, it's pretty broad. I think we need to hone in on that a little bit.
All right.
Madam Chair, the, the other thing is, I think that uh, Betty brought up a good point. Maybe we should identify what the obligation of the county is to support 4-H. I mean, what kind of things are we obligated to, and what was our intention? You know, I don't, I don't, I don't fault that from the taxpayers' understanding that, but also that, what our commitment to 4-H is, and what does that cover? Joe, just a thought.
I think they're just statutory authorizations, but I think we have a lot of discretion on what we spend there.
Right, I, I'm, I'm going to throw that in Wendy's hands at some later meeting date, I guess, but.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Next agenda item, item five.
So is this, as we uh, move forward with hiring DGR to do the, the water and sewer upgrades to the project, one of the things that we discovered is uh, not really under-anticipated, but as we're building buildings, things are getting changed and we're kind of creating some drainage issues. So I'd like to also move forward and hire DGR to help us uh, uh, continue the topographic mapping of the facility and come up with some uh, plans on fixing some potential drainage problems.
And have they submitted a proposal?
They have. I would hope you have that.
That's what I'm looking for here. What kind of drainage problems?
Well, when we um, for instance, uh, the, the original design was to allow a gentle water flow over the horse arena to flow towards the southwest. And just because of the general makeup of the sand, dirt material in it, uh, even with a little bit of rain, we had this last year, it kind of seemed to stay a little wet. So uh, um, our concern is, as we get into a normal rainfall, that we're going to maybe have some problems with usage, to be honest, just because it, the, the main events are in May and June. And um, so we just thought maybe that we could come up with either some drain tile around it or some uh, uh, ditching or some mild burms to keep the water flow from, just redirecting the water flow around it. And then, uh, in addition, when we built the building that's there, uh, because of just, once you uh, tapered uh, away from the building to allow access in with equipment, we kind of uh, stopped some of the flow of the water. So again, we had a couple pockets that seemed to stay a little wet.
Who designed it in the first place?
Um, that was IMAG. And with IMAG, it, the plan was, um, as it's developed, we'd have continued engineering costs to help resolve these problems. It's, it's kind of the norm. You know, unfortunately, since it's, it's not an all-at-one-time thing, we're kind of dealing with headaches as we create them a little bit.
That's eighty-five hundred dollars, it looks like, estimated. Questions, discussion?
In for a penny, in for a pound. This is what happens when we don't flush out all the details before jumping in headfirst to these projects. We're in two million dollars deep now, and this is just a 4-H building. I think it's a lesson that should be heated regarding courthouse expansion.
So you're, John, you're saying that where this horse thing is, that that is subject to drainage? I mean, I looked at that ground, my God, we walked over it and been all over it, and I'm hard-pressed to figure out how that's going to flood. I, I just.
It's, it's not that it's going to flood. The water will move across it, it just will stay kind of wet. So, so if you could imagine, before we put the sand into it, it was kind of a bathtub, right? Uh, because you had, you had soil on the outside, you made an indentation to put sand, which, so, because you want the stand to hold fast to stay there for the surface area for the horse arena. Well, because of the way it was designed, it, it was supposed to flow across it. That was kind of the most inexpensive way to move the water across it. But what we're kind of seeing, and it might be a little bit of the result of the fact that 4-H themselves did purchase the sand materials for it. Um, we've modified the, the original spec a little bit. It was originally supposed to have, I think, four to six inches of gravel base, and then another four inches of sand on top of it. So of course, that would have been a, a larger bathtub, which would have held a lot more water. Well, because of the cost and the fact that 4-H had to come up with those dollars, they went with more of a soil base and then a two to four inches of sand on top of it. It was still going to be adequate for their needs, but it's caused, you know, a problem with moisture buildup.
Uh, to use the facility.
It.
So we can't haul in any other type of mater, is that what you want to look at? Hauling in some other type of material that will drain better?
I'm more looking at, there's always going to be need for the 4-H to add sand. It's just kind of the, the nature of the beast of that kind of a facility. And they're understanding that and expecting to do that. But what I was hoping to do is maybe redirect some of the water flow away from the arena itself. Whereas now, it, it starts high, it was somewhat leveled, you know, because you can't have it two-slope, because you want to have a level surface to ride on. So the water, as you can imagine, it still was gently supposed to move across the property, uh, but it's slow enough that, that area stays kind of wet.
Okay.
Commissioner Poppins, he mentioned tiling. Tiling seems like a, an inexpensive viable alternative to me.
If there's an outlet, so. And, and that might be the result of this engineering study. That's, it, we, we don't know how we will ultimately make it better.
We'll, we'll find out hopefully when the studies.
That's what they're here to do, is help us resolve it.
Is there other public comment on that?
All right, is there other public comment on this agenda item? If not, I'd consider a motion.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy.
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. Next agenda item. That's why you're here today.
That's hoping for. Steve Swanson, Lincoln County Sheriff. Um, what I'm asking to do is to reclassify a current position from an SO-one deputy to an SO-two sergeant. The reason being is, as we grow, we have more staff out, and we're, we're, my goal would be eventually to have a supervisor in the field twenty-four hours a day with the deputies. This will seal up about twenty-two to, some days it'll be twenty-four, but twenty-two hours a day, we'd have a supervisor, so it'd be pretty much around the clock. And the importance of that is liability, that, as critical incidents occur, we're calling, calling supervisors out. Uh, in twenty twenty-one, we paid a little over twenty-one thousand in overtime to the two sergeants. Not so much concerned about the money, but the burnout factor of working two hundred hours additional. Uh, this would, this would cut that down at a cost. And I'm just going to use a rough number, sixty-five thousand for a sergeant. Uh, or a deputy makes approximately sixty-five thousand, that would be eligible to be a sergeant. Union contract allows them a nine, or requires a nine percent pay raise. So we're talking about fifty-six hundred dollars plus benefits, so roughly seven thousand dollars uh, to reclassify this position.
All right, anybody have any questions for the sheriff? If not, you've heard the request, ask for motion.
Public input.
Oh, jeez, public comment, all right.
I did the same thing last week. More than once.
All right, that's like three times now.
It's okay.
Work in progress. Anybody from the public want to come up and speak on this agenda item? All right, if not.
Madam Chair, move for approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy.
Yes. And we will move on to item seven on our agenda. Active data quote.
There's been an issue with the basement in the courthouse that we've had two leaks. Um, the court reporter's documents on two separate occasions have been flooded in those areas. And one of the concerns that this is addressing is the fact that the court's records, um, the clerk of courts keeps their records in two different locations. One of them happens, I believe, to be the old women's bathroom. And the other area is underneath the courthouse, and um, there's an old vault in there as well, but they all have either steam pipes or water pipes that run above them. The previous leak was actually a leak from the outside of the building that came down through the building. There was, I believe, a sprinkler system that went, irrigation system that um, leaked, and it came in through the walls and it got to the court reporter's side of the building. So the concern here is that the records for the courts being stored underneath, in the basement, is just highly susceptible to water, and we've already had two leaks as it is. And so one of the options was to go out and get a quote to have them all scanned in instead of moving them to a new location or finding new, um, a new spot for them, is that they would all be scanned in. There's, I believe, a hundred and some boxes down there, a hundred and thirty or so, and the total cost was fifty-two thousand for them to be scanned in. So that's what the quote is.
All right. Heard the request, is there a motion?
Bill, if this is scanned and scanned in, we don't know, the boxes, are they still maintained? Or are they, or are they digit, or?
Once they're scanned and verified, we shut them.
Okay, thank you.
All right, um, you have a commi, you have a question?
Madam Auditor, just for clarity, whose budget will this initially at least come out of?
It'll be out of the general fund.
Okay, that's where it gets applied to right away, all right.
That's what it's like, uh, I'm not, I mean, I don't know if it's going to be buildings or judicial or commissioners, but it'll.
By the time we pay it, you'll figure it out.
Yeah, well, of course, it'll be out of the general fund.
All right, thank you.
Any public comment on this agenda item?
Bill, how, how long's it going to take and when's it going to be done?
I, my understanding as part of the quote is that they will actually come and get the boxes, and they have a place that they will store them on their site that's secure, and that they will scan them in. Is that your understanding as well?
That's correct. In fact, they already have the boxes.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Do you think they'll be done by the end of this year with an invoice?
I've got a motion by Commissioner Poppins, a second by Commissioner Aaron's. Um, just making sure there was no public comment on this item. All right, Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy.
Yes. All right, and we had taken item eight off, so we'll move on to item nine, adjustments to the budget. Good morning, Sherry.
Good morning. So the adjustments that I have for the twenty twenty-two budget so far, um, I need to move the budgeted cash transferred from the general fund to nine-one-one communications in the amount of a hundred and fifty-three thousand, three hundred and two dollars. Um, I need to do an automatic budget supplement uh, for federal grant and furniture for the minor equipment in the sheriff's office for ninety-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars and fourteen cents. That was for the trailer that they got. And then I want to transfer the cash from the DARE fund to the general fund. Um, there's a balance of seven dollars and twenty-six cents. That's been hanging out there for a couple years, and the DARE program is over, so. Those three different adjustments, I can do approvals or motions on each one.
You need motions on each separate one?
No, we could do it in one.
Okay.
Sherry, um, do you know why we're over on the nine-one-one?
Well, we're not over on the budget, we're, that'll be, when we, they have their budgeted cash that we have to give them, so we just are transferring the cash to them.
So we just are transferring the cash to them.
Okay.
Right now, their cash is $19,341 in the hole. So to get them through the end of the year, it'd be $155.30... Or $302. But I think they originally had budgeted more than that. They had $388.197 budgeted, so...
Okay.
We're not transferring the whole amount budgeted.
Understood. Thank you.
All right. Any public input on this agenda item? All right. If not, I'd consider a motion.
Madam Chair, move for approval of the transfer of funds.
Second.
Thank you. Motion and second. Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. All right. Next item.
We have, we received the juvenile detention services contract. It is an 8.2% increase compared to 2022. I pulled up the account that we normally would have the funds come out of. Currently, we have spent $202,662.40 out of the $330 that we had budgeted. So I just need the authorization for the chair to sign the agreement for the new rates for January 23 through December 2023.
Madam Chair, I don't have a question, but I just want to let everybody know that you probably got the invite to this. But tomorrow is part of the... Minnehaha County is putting on that meeting at 7:30 tomorrow for people who want to tour the JDC. So it's happening at the JDC if folks want to go. Starts at 7:30 a.m.
Madam Chair, one question?
Go ahead.
Does anyone know what evening report center services are?
The email that I have, it's for people that are within the city of Sioux Falls. I would imagine it's probably where they check in.
The reason I ask that, Madam Chair or Madam Auditor, is that it just lists Sioux Falls Public School and yet inside of the city limits of Sioux Falls, there's two or three different school districts. And I'm just curious why that only identifies the Sioux Falls School District.
I don't know. I could follow up and ask them and get you that information.
Thank you.
One comment, Madam Chair, to follow up on what Commissioner Aaron said. I would encourage everybody to go to look at the present facility because they're talking about building a new one. And that will be of significant cost.
Thank you for that, Commissioner. Any public input on this item? If not, I'd consider a motion.
So moved.
Motion to approve?
Second. Yeah, motion to approve.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. We'll move on to our opportunity for public comment. If there's anybody in the audience that wants to come up and speak.
Hello, Madam Chair and Commissioner. My name is Linda Montgomery from Fairview, South Dakota. I'm again here today to talk about requests for the CVRs and public information to be let go of. The taxpayers, hard-working taxpayers, have asked four times via FOIA request for CVRs, tabulator data for the 2020. And twice that was done. And for the primary CVRs, and that was also done twice. Because we were not ever able to hear and get those public records, we are, we had to go secure a lawyer to fight for us.
Ma'am, again, I've went over this before. We're not going to talk about any pending or anticipated litigation during public comment.
I don't know about pending. Alls I know is we have a lawyer, you have a lawyer. This is public information. I don't know what is concerning about that. It is public record.
It's prohibited by our public comment policy. And I would ask that you refresh yourself with the policy before you speak next time. Thank you.
So the right to free speech is gone in this county. Thank you.
Any Commissioner reports that they'd like to make?
Yeah, Madam Chair, thank you. Last night, there was a pipeline... The second pipeline, Heartland-Greenway Navigator CO2 Systems. They had their meeting in Canton. It was pretty well-attended. And that, just so people know, that meeting is put on by the Public Utilities Commission to take formal input from citizens. And they will be holding a meeting in Sioux Falls tonight at the Best Western Ram Coda at 6 o'clock if people want to attend. And then also, I just want to remind people that tonight at 6:30 at Journey Elementary, two blocks north of my house, we're having the last, final, I think it is, jailhouse, or excuse me, jailhouse, courthouse expansion, open house meeting. So I invite people to go to that as well. Thank you.
Did you say you were inviting everybody over for coffee afterwards? Is that what you said?
I'll bring it to the school.
So, and just to comment on what Commissioner Aaron said, there's actually a PUC public meeting in Flandre this morning at 11:30 at the William Jancklow Community Center in Flandre. And then the notice that I got, just to clarify, was actually that the meeting tonight at the Ram Coda starts at 5:30.
That's correct.
Oh, okay.
In the Washington Room.